All right, the time is one o'clock. We will start by having the pledge of allegiance.
The pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So, I think many of you have met the new commissioner to finish out Chad Banks' term, Stacy Petrovus. I don't know if you want to say hello or...
Howdy.
Okay, we'll move right into it. Election of officers.
So, we have to do this in the interim to finish this year, I guess, is the requirement?
Correct, yeah, because Chad was president, so there's a vacancy.
Okay. Okay, I thought it was lower, I guess we have to make it official, so... Do you want to open the floor for nominations?
I'll open the floor for nominations.
I'll nominate Teresa Basinger as chair.
It's good for me.
Second.
Second. Okay, all right, we've got a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carries. The second item on the agenda...
If you have to replace the vice president.
Oh, we do. I apologize. We'll open up the floor for nominations for vice chair.
I nominate Rob Schuman.
I'll second that. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carries. The second item on the agenda, the applicant withdrew his application, so we are actually going to take a second and recognize Denise Spencer. I know you're here.
Denise, would you join us up front, please?
So, as you may know, Amy Beckford's here in the room. We've kind of started the initiative to recognize employees or folks when they go above and beyond, or if they have a... They've demonstrated a repeated tendency to go above and beyond, and that's the case here with Denise. And a lot of times when people nominate someone for this special recognition, they want to remain anonymous, but that's not the case here. So Denise was nominated by her boss, the treasurer, Kay Gatton, and Kay says, "I would like to nominate Denise Spencer to be recognized for going above and beyond for Whitley County and the treasurer's office. She came in on her scheduled days off to contact the BMV so we could receive in some money that was sitting in the bank. She is always willing to help coworkers, constituents, and anyone else in need. If you gave out an award for a heart of gold, she would win it hands down. It's an honor to have her as my chief deputy and a bigger honor to call her my friend."
For our commissioners, we would just like to express our sincere gratitude for everything that you do and everything you stand for. I don't think there's hardly a moment when your eyes are open that you're not thinking of a way to help someone else or do something for someone else, so thank you for all that you do.
Thank you.
No tears?
Jason, she needs a nice present.
Dinner out, at least.
She holds a checkbook, I don't even worry about it.
Oh, maybe she'll let you go.
Yep, thank you Denise. Sheriff Spencer Drone Operation Fund. We introduced this last month at our meeting, but it was just rabidized, so we had to have a second hearing. And so anytime we open up another fund or an account, by state statute, we have to have an ordinance for it, so that's all it is. The sheriff's department got a sizable donation from a corporation in Whitley County to help out with their drone operations and things that they would need for that, so we're going to go ahead and approve an ordinance so that they can accept those funds and have the monies because they have to have a separate fund for the drone fund, I'm guessing. So, is the... I think it's 21, it was the ordinance, okay.
Twenty twenty-five dash twenty-one? This is the second reading, correct?
Correct, yeah, this would be a motion to pass it.
Okay, I'll make a move. I'll move to approve ordinance twenty twenty-five dash twenty-one as presented.
I'll second it.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carries. Cindy Doolittle, Order Establishing Precincts.
Hello. You should have that in your paperwork, the order establishing precincts. This is to do with an annexation from the city. This will affect Columbia Number Six to Columbia Northeast. It's already been approved through the state, so at this point, we need a signature and then you would need to post this into paper for legal notice, and then if there's no opposition, then it goes forward. And Jessica Hockemeyer, she has a map, if you guys want to look at the map to see how much this affects.
That would be nice.
I guess if you have it, might as well look at it.
Columbia Northeast is right here. It's just annexed in this big area right here. There's no houses or anything in it.
This is right out of Morse's Park here.
Yeah.
You see that?
So, we just changed that from Columbia Northeast to Columbia Six.
They requested it, I believe, didn't they?
Yeah, because it was annexed in and Columbia Northeast is a county precinct.
So, we need to move to allow Commissioner Basinger to sign it, or...
Yes, for you, all debates are all you.
Or we all sign it?
Sign it, and then it can be published.
Okay. I'll move to approve this request as presented for us to allow... For us to sign it and advertise. We'll input.
Yeah. I'll second it.
Okay, I've got a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carries. Is this copy okay, or did you have it through here? Okay.
I had revamped it last year. Commissioner Petrovus, the wellness program is just designed that if individuals carry out different wellness activities, they can get a discount after being employed for a full year, a full calendar year. So, there are really no changes to any of the documentation other than Twenty Twenty-Six. Anything else you want to add, Scott?
The biggest question that we have, last year, Darcy went around to every department and got extra people signed up that hadn't been signed up by February of last year, and we have probably, what, less than twenty employees who take advantage of the program? And my question to you is, would you want... Would you be in favor of us coming back next month with a change to that? I know that involves council as well, a change to the wellness program to increase participation. I know that the city does a lot more things than the county does, and to get more people involved in that, which in the back end of it saves the county on costs for health care, we would like to possibly come back with some changes if you're accepting that, or you think all enough people love alone, or... I think there could be some changes that could involve more participation, but it will take a commitment from the commissioners and the council to do that. It will have more cost to that.
So, is the idea to come to our first meeting in November and then the council?
Correct.
Or, okay. Yeah, I'd like to hear what you guys can come up with.
Yeah, probably a good idea.
Okay, work on that, and we'll get back, get that to both of your departments, and we'll get it on the agenda, and we'll look at what is comparable with the city's doing versus what maybe some other counties want, to help... I know that we have a healthy fund, but we'd like those to be healthy in counties. Thank you.
Any questions at all for us about anything else? You're doing great and so thankful that you're here. She's great.
Thank you.
Wonderful hire. Thank you. Ryan Getz, Annual Supplies Bid Notice.
Good afternoon.
Howdy.
Every year, we have to put our normal supplies out to bid. That would include all aggregates, liquid asphalt, hot mix asphalt, fuel, diesel, gas, pretty much everything that we use on a regular basis, and this is what this document is. Just need to get it signed and attested so we can get it advertised. Any questions?
If I remember last year, the letter, wasn't there something wrong with the date or something? And there was, and I think it involved your office.
Oh, was it when they were delivered on holiday, maybe?
Yes.
Did we make sure it's not being turned in on holiday?
I pushed it out, Pat, because it would have been the Friday after Thanksgiving normally, so I pushed it out until the next, the following Friday, or no, previous Friday. That way, it's... They still have a month to get us the... Their bids. It avoids the holiday, and then December first will be the bid opening at this meeting.
Okay. It looks like there's only one signature block, so...
Yep. I'll move to allow Commissioner Basinger to sign the notice and get the word out to bidders.
Second that.
Got a first and a second. Is there any more discussion? All those in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So, we received notification from the state that we are going to be handling our Seavit and Fit revenues differently than how they've been done previously. Up until now, the state sends us a rather large sum of money, and Tamela has to go in on this fund spreadsheet and figure out how much Thorn Creek gets, how much Laurelwell gets, how much the county gets, and now they're saying they're just going to send directly to those other divisions, I guess, and then we have our own along with that. It gets broke down into basically every fund that the levy or that we have in the levy, little piece of all of it goes into that currently. The way the state is doing it now is they are saying it's all going to go in general unless you decide to allocate it somewhere else. So, you can either just leave as is and everything goes into county gen, or you can decide to kind of do it as we have been doing and allow the little pieces to go into each area of the levy. That would be you've got your health department, reassessment, Q bridge, Q cap development, everybody who gets a piece of the levy. So, no vote is necessary if you're just wanting all in county gen, but you do need to state if you wanted to go, leave it down.
So, if we just stick it all in the county gen, what does that do to the budget? Does that mess anything up?
No, because the numbers that we received from the state, they had already stated that they were going to zero out everybody's Seavit and Fit, but we can choose to allow to keep going in there.
Okay.
But I mean, it's... I have a breakdown if you would like to see it. We've got for... This is for the financial income tax that we got earlier this year. Fourteen thousand went into general, two hundred and fifty went into reassessment, sixty-five dollars goes to 4H, sixty-five dollars goes to council on aging, you know, just get broke down a little bit here and there.
So, why did they change it? If it doesn't matter, do you know? No, they just felt like it?
The state does what the state does.
What works better for you?
I mean, it's completely up to how you guys want to do it, it's, you know...
What's easiest to follow.
I haven't had conversations with other departments to let them know that these funds may not be going into their... So, I'm going to wait till you guys decide.
I can do it either way.
I assume if you don't, if it goes into county general, then if these divisions wanted funds, they'd have to come and ask for funds opposed to automatically just going into their fund.
And that was kind of my concern, because if it's the way that we've always been doing it, and they've already budgeted everything, I'd hate to clog up more council meetings on something that they wouldn't have had to do otherwise.
I thought you said they were going to send it right to these...
No, like Laurelwell received theirs straight to them, rather than us having to calculate for every other entity. For us, I just need to know where we put our chunk.
Oh, of our chunk, oh.
Yeah.
Well, it affects you and your department more than...
For us, it's... We already have the spreadsheet set up. All we do is put in tax rates, and it tells us where to go, so that's not my decision, unfortunately. It's something you guys have to make if you want it to go to county gen, or if you would like it to keep going how it is to all the levy affected funds.
I would say leave it the way it's been if that's...
I would agree.
That's been... That's worked in the past, I don't know why it wouldn't work in the future, so I would move to, well, I don't know, we don't...
You need to vote, yeah.
We do need to vote. I'll move to allow the funds to be... To remain going forward, being deposited as they have been in the past.
I'll second that.
Got a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carries. And we have one facilities request for October... Or I'm sorry, the date they turned in, it was October sixth. It is for December fifth and sixth, the Whitley County Courthouse and South Lawn, Friday four thirty...
She's here.
Oh.
Hello.
Hi.
I'm Lee... Yes, I'm Lee Murgi. I'm with the Whitley County Community Christmas Celebration. First of all, we'd like to just appreciate how much you guys have let us use this. We're a few years out from having our fortieth year of celebrating the Christmas with our community. It's a free event, it's all volunteer run, and we have hot cocoa and cookies and music in the courthouse, and then we also do the live nativity on the courthouse square.
I've brought my family to this several times, and they always enjoy it, so thank you for putting it on.
So, I think Angela, did you reach out to her with the facilities cost?
I didn't.
So...
Okay, I did not get the cost of that yet. I didn't realize I could mail me. Do you know what that would be, or...
Yeah, they have it available.
So, I've got the breakdown, and so I'll just speak quickly. So, there have been a lot of... We've spent a lot in overtime for maintenance, and there's also overtime, I believe, for the sheriff's department. Do you guys give security, it's on here? Do you guys send guys over there for any activities like that, like...
I think the restrooms are open, but it's gated.
Okay, so it doesn't... Is Mark here?
Because he has security.
Yes?
Security is there.
Okay. So...
The what?
Singing, the music.
So, for supplies, cleaning, trash bags, cleaning and carpet extraction, that's five eighty, and then it looks like security costs are two fifty plus for six hours. Jason, does that sound right on your end, two fifty, to have someone there?
Sure.
Okay. So, what is that, eight thirty? So, it looks like it's eight thirty. So, with it not being a county activity and county government is not dependent on it, and just with things being tight as they are, we are going to have to start charging for after-hours facility requests if an entity wants to use it. I don't feel it's right that the taxpayers should be paying for that. I also spoke to Thor on council, and he believed that the applicant was already paying it. So, it's my belief that if we go to council and ask for more money, it should be for a really good reason for county operations. So, going forward, and Andy, I was going to actually touch base with you. Can you amend the facilities request?
Yeah.
To update with the costs that the applicant would have to cover all of that?
Yes, yes. These are going to be a standard flat cost, or it's hourly?
Yeah, it would be, I guess, hourly, depending on how big the event is and how many days it goes.
Was that cost total, or was that per night?
I believe it's total.
Yeah, it's total, okay. I think as many people as enjoy this event, you will have no trouble finding a sponsor, and if you do, come see me, and I'll help you.
Okay.
So...
Okay.
So, I guess with that, I think a motion to approve contingent upon agreement to cover the extra cost that the event is going to incur on the county would be appropriate.
So, move. I'll second it.
Okay, I've got a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carries.
And when would that be due?
That would be due, I can't imagine... I was actually thinking about how the payment should go, and I think having a pay before might be a little premature because we probably don't know the exact cost on everything for things like the paper products, cleaning supplies and whatnot. So, I think, I don't know, fourteen days after the event, I guess we have it. Andy, do you know? Do you have a recommendation on how long?
No, I mean, I maybe give you some business days, so that, you know, it's depending on they happen, it could be on weekends and stuff like that, but maybe fourteen business days, and I imagine too, because some events probably will raise money at the events to help pay for it, I assume, too, so afterwards, it makes a lot of sense.
Okay.
Sounds good.
I mean, I can bring a proposal, because we have to amend the policy anyway, I'll put something in there.
Could you do that?
Yeah.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
Thank you, Lee.
is for the total amount of six eighty-four. Her and her husband own shoes and more, and at times, the sheriff's department and the maintenance department...
On the highway?
Or the highway will use their vouchers to go get boots over there. So, with the change in state statute, anytime they purchase anything from there, or there's a lot of other instances, but that's why we've gotten so many from her. So, looks like there were two purchases, and the total's six eighty-four.
That is a unique situation, that Whitley County employee owns another business that I reached out to the state reps to see if there was a possibility of having some sort of a yearly waiver so that she wouldn't have to do this every month, but as of yet, that hasn't been a possibility, so I guess I will move to approve this disclosure request as presented.
I'll second it.
Got a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? Got a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carries. It looks like there's only two signature blocks. Payroll and accounts payable. Stacy and I went up this morning and looked at both payroll and accounts payable. So I would move to approve payroll.
Second it.
Got a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carries. And claims also looked good. There was nothing out of the ordinary, so I would move to approve claims as well.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carries. Previous meeting minutes.
They look to be accurate to the best of my recollection, so I will move to approve the minutes from the October sixth, twenty twenty-five Board of Commissioners meeting as presented.
And I'll second that. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carries. Okay, and I will allow for public comment for three minutes a person, if there's anyone who would like to come up.
Good afternoon. Just right here, is this fine?
Yeah, you can have a seat if you want.
I'm okay standing if that's okay with you. I'm Lindsay Hammond. I'm the Northeast Community Liaison for the Office of Community and Rural Affairs, OCRE, and I just wanted to stop in today to introduce myself. OCRE works with Indiana communities to build relevant and economically thriving places where people want to live, work, and grow. OCRE manages the Community Development Block Grant Program for the state, and we have... so we manage federal funds that aim to support non-entitlement communities with various initiatives like wastewater, drinking water, stormwater, infrastructure upgrades, blight clearance and elimination, Main Street revitalization of public facilities, as well as planning grants. We have planning grants available as well. CDPG funding plays a crucial role in enhancing the quality of life for Indiana communities, as well as ensuring health and safety of their residents. So like I said, I just want to stop in today and introduce myself, and if any of you have time after the meeting, I would appreciate a couple minutes of your time. I just wanted to stop in and introduce myself to your community and let you all know what we do at OCRE.
Welcome to Whitley County.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Is there anyone else who would like to come up? Okay. Does anyone have anything else? Rob, Stacy?
I have nothing to add.
Tiffany? Andy? Okay, are we stand adjourned?